Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. We're glad that you're all here. And at this time, we will call the meeting to order. And we will ask Mr. Tony Cluess tonight if he would come forth and give us the invitation. Tony's from the Hamlet Church of God Prophecy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate you asking me to come and be with you tonight. Let us pray. Most gracious and kind, loving Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, that you have blessed the city of Hamlet as you have, Lord. And we pray, God, for our leaders tonight. Lord, we would ask God your guidance and direction upon them. And, Lord, I would like to thank, Lord, the city of Hamlet and our council, Lord, for allowing us to pray during the meetings. So many places are stopping prayer before their meetings. And I thank you tonight that they are not. And, Lord, we would ask that you would continue to bless the city, bless our citizens, watch over, protect us. And, Lord, as our upcoming Seat Board Festival is about to start, Lord, we would ask God for perfect weather, beautiful sunshine weather. And we would ask there would be a beautiful day. Bless each one as we give you the praise, honor, and glory for all, in Jesus' name. Amen. I'd like to apologize. I've got to go. I've got a stake waiting on me at home.
Thank you so much, Tony. We really appreciate that. Counsel, at this time, you have before you the agenda to be adopted, and I believe that we're going to make a change on it. Someone will make a motion?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to remove item number six on the agenda.
I've got a motion to accept the agenda with the change. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel, before you, you also have the minutes from the regular August 13th, 2016. And you have had before you the closed session minutes from that same date. What are your wishes on those minutes?
To move to approve.
Motion. And a second. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions that need to be done to them? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've come to that portion of the meeting at this time. If there's anyone here with us tonight who has any comments that they want to make regarding any issue other than what's on the agenda tonight, we would ask you to please come forward at this time. Yes, sir, Mr. Strickland. Good to have you with us tonight.
It's good to be here.
Thank you.
It's been about a year since I've been able to attend the council meeting. I'm glad I'm being able to be here tonight. I'd just like to know if I can get an update on the Suggs property out on Boyd Lake Road, what's being done, if anything, and kind of some current goings-on.
Is that the mobile home park, old mobile home park?
Yes, sir. The home in the middle of it.
All right. We would ask Mr. Strickland at this time if she's got an update on that. I haven't been out there lately.
Two mobile homes, yes.
The Suggs property is not a part of the mobile home property. It is a, as Mr. Strickland mentioned, it is a house that sits pretty much in the middle on the road frontage. The owners are deceased. We attempted to make contact. We found the executor of the estate, who was a brother of Ms. Suggs. He no longer has any responsibility in the property. There were three grandchildren that we were able to make contact with one locally, sent letters that she signed for, sent letters to the two sons that lived out of state. One was signed for, one was not. Went through the process of having a hearing, which no one showed up for. And so, we initiated the fines. So, this property has been getting fifty dollar per day fines for some time. So, it, along with twenty-some others here in our city, are getting fined monthly. Now, it will, at some point this year, we will decide what properties to take down with the money that council has appropriated. But at this time, we have done all we can. The uncle told me that he did not think the children, grandchildren, were able to restore the property, that he was sad for what had happened. But that's where we are.
Okay. Just to correct me, though, that's the property that's back toward the ball field from the...
Going right on the road, right?
It's right, it's right on the road.
Yeah. Okay.
Right on the road. In fact, if you turn into the mobile home park, you're going to circle around that house and come out on the other side of the house.
Oh, okay. Did that answer your question, Mr. Strickland? We just don't have any money, and we've got, of course, we have to go through the court procedure.
It answers my question, but that leads to another one.
Okay. No, go ahead.
If you don't mind. Since the property is being fined at fifty dollars a day, wouldn't this kind of eliminate somebody being able to purchase that property and do something with it? I mean, if you've got a fifteen thousand dollar worth of fine on it here...
Not necessarily.
Sure. That's what I was...
That's right. According to the North Carolina general statutes, the city cannot obtain possession of that property. So, we do not and will not at any time have the right to sell that property to anyone. We can levy fines for the code violations. We can, if we take it down, we can place a lien against the property for the amount that we spend for everything incurred, the staff's time, for the attorney's fees, for the advertisement, for the actual demolition. All we can do is place a fine against the property. We will never, ever assume ownership of that property. So, there is no way the city can sell it.
Let me...
If the heirs decided to sell it, then they would have to go through the court process. Now, I'm just assuming this. I am no attorney. But they would have to go through the process. And then, what's going to happen if they sell it? They're going to owe us the money that has been levied against it.
So, there's no incentive for them to sell it?
Unless they would come before council to say that someone's wanting to purchase it, to make it a, update it, do something with it, to put it back on our tax books. Council then might want to consider doing something.
The policy of this council is that if someone were wanting to buy that property, they could come before the board and give us a plan of what was going to be done with it, how soon it was going to be done, and we would make the determination after that.
I want to direct this to you. Could the city talk to the heirs and see if they would be willing to, in lieu of fines, donate, to give it to the city in essence? And that way, the city would take...
We've had others do that.
That would eliminate, because you're talking about fining somebody, but if they're not even going to clean it up, I mean, everybody in here knows that that's smoke and mirrors. You're not going to get anything out of that.
Right. According to the uncle, the three grandchildren could not come to an agreement among themselves as to what to do to the property. And that's why it ended up in the situation it was. One of the grandchildren was very interested in the property. It was her grandmother's. It's where she was raised. Now, this is all coming from the uncle. Her heart was there, and she truly wanted to keep it as a home for herself and her family. But the other two siblings would not come to an agreement with her. And so, the sad situation is, as the uncle told me, it sat there and became a dilapidated structure.
Right. But with the burden of the fines on there, maybe it... I'm just thinking outside the box. I mean, I'm not in...
Yeah. So, a couple of things. I mean, I think Gail's already communicated with the heirs, or at least with the uncle. So, we could certainly keep talking, and, you know, sometimes things change. And she's absolutely right that the city can't magically transform fines into ownership of the property. Now, if the city really wanted to, and sometimes there's a reason to do this, you go to court and get a judgment for that, and then you can foreclose on that. Or you could, you know, do nuisance abatement or minimum housing abatement, and put a lien on the property and acquire a title that way. But that's a very involved process. It's going to expend a fair amount of the city's resources. So, I think Gail's exactly right. She's done everything she can at this point. You know, if council directs, you could have some different conversations. There's more process we could go through. But I think that'd be a conversation we'd want to have with council, maybe as a separate agenda item at some time.
Well, the county would have first dibs on it anyway, right?
Is it, is it in the county, or is it a...
No, it's in the city.
At this point, that's right.
They've got tax liens on it, too.
At this point, that's right.
We've learned that already. We've been...
I think the further discussion is trying to get through it quicker, because that house has been a nuisance for a long, for a long time. I mean, as many others. But, you know, there's a difference in you've got people constantly coming versus no one says anything about it. This has been one that's been constantly brought forth to us. I mean, I...
Can the city make an offer to purchase?
Yes. Now, of course, the three heirs don't have any obligation to sell.
Right.
I mean, the only way the city could acquire property is to either take a lien or judgment for those unpaid fines all the way through the foreclosure process.
But would there be anything wrong, any ethical issues with the city saying these fines are imposing? Would you be willing to sell it to us for a hundred dollars or five dollars or...
No. I mean, I think, and you're right to ask the question that way, because I don't think the city would want to be heavy-handed and say, "We're going to do this unless you sell."
That's what I'm asking. I don't want it to appear, I'm just saying, we've got to try to look outside the box. Because you can't get these properties.
But there's no ethical or legal issue with the city having that conversation with them. Again, they don't have to respond.
Right. They don't have to respond. But I mean, if they look at the fines that's been levied on other properties, I mean, they may say, "Well, you know, this..." And maybe a bottom line, we've got to do something about the property.
But, you know, you go back and think about it, and talk about that. We're catching a tremendous amount of flack right now for the properties up there around Monroe Avenue School. What we're going to do about those?
I thought you said the same thing. Asking the same thing.
Every day, somebody's saying something to me about those things up there, hazards to school kids.
I guess the difference is, this one has been brought forth to our meeting. Like, there's true concerns. Like, we get phone calls about complaints all the time. When you bring stuff to this meeting, I mean, that shows you're really concerned and you care truly about it. Not saying that...
Well, I guess if we're putting it on TV tonight, we'll have all kind of school pictures here next month.
Yeah.
They're really raising sand about that.
Oh, I know, because I've been out there with them.
Are the heirs aware of the fine that's being levied?
Yes, sir. I send out a statement each month that adds fifteen hundred dollars to it every month. Now, I'm only able to send it to two. The third one, as I mentioned, the mail comes back, but it was the only address I had. But I send out monthly statements to each property owner that's in violation.
But it keeps coming back. Nobody's accepting the mail?
No.
For one, for one of the grandchildren. Yes, sir. The address I had...
Couldn't the letters be hand-delivered right to them?
They live out of state.
Well, I know that.
Two, two of the grandchildren received the mail. But the one that lives out of state, it came back no longer at that address. So, I don't have a good address for the third person.
It seems like to me there will be some way to personally, to a sheriff's department or through some service or somebody, hand-deliver the mail to them and testify that they got it.
But I don't know where they are, who to send it to. I don't have an address for the third person. I don't know, I don't know where they're living to send it to a sheriff's department or a police department to get it delivered.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Gail. I appreciate it. Jamie, anything else? Other comment? Okay, thank you. We'll work on it. See what we can do. Anyone else tonight got anything? Not on the agenda? Okay. At this time, we'll close comments from attendees. We'll move along to item number seven. Public hearing is open at this time on the Kirkland rezoning request on Highway 74. And Kathy, do you have comments for us about what you're doing there, so everybody will know?
We just need extra driveway.
No. What is your project over there? I mean, things are starting to look...
You just don't have to wait.
Oh, okay.
Surprise!
That's all. Is there any...
She's been saying that for months, though. You're just going to have...
Sure. Has anyone here tonight's got any comments about the rezoning?
I wanted to ask her one question, but she didn't tell you, she's not going to tell me. I'm going to ask you at some point, but I hope it's true.
Yeah, we've heard some good things, so we...
Okay.
Anyway.
All right. Do I...
You have to say yes.
Okay. If there's no further, if there's no further discussion in the public hearing on this, I'll close the public hearing at this time. And we'll go to item number eight, which is a consideration of the Kirkland rezoning and approval of the council consistency statement. Do I have a motion on that?
Make a motion that we adopt that.
All right. I have a motion. I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. You are rezoned.
It's something good.
Now, you going to tell us?
No. Wait.
All right. Next item of business is item number nine, which is approval of submitted tax releases, which you have before you, from our tax collector, Ms. Turner. And it's our regular monthly releases.
I didn't see anything off the wall, so I move to approve.
He has where they're cited and one tax rate.
Yeah.
The grand total of one hundred and ninety-five fifty-four. What are your wishes, counsel?
I move to approve.
Do I motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Item number ten. You have before you budget amendments, which is enclosure number five. And what are your wishes at this time?
I actually have a question on...
You go right ahead.
Yeah. And I think there may be another question on this, too. The, and it may have been in some, but I missed it. I don't know. The Parks and Rec building, the renovation to concession stands, what was that?
Yes, sir. After we had our Babe Ruth or Cal Ripken tournament back this summer, the council, towards the end of that meeting, wanted to try to figure out how much money was made in the concession stand during the tournament. And the council wanted to award that back to Parks and Rec as a special project. I asked our Parks and Rec director to look into that. We calculated that that amount was one thousand seven hundred dollars, is one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. And the Parks and Rec director wanted to use that money to renovate the concession stands the best he could with that amount of money.
Okay. I knew we did the other part. I didn't... That's what they did with that money.
Anyone else have questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you pop that up one more size? I mean, I've seen it before. There you go. Eyes are not as good as used to be. I was talking to you outside earlier today and asked about the AMP actual, the building part. You said they were going to put crush and run on it. Is that, can we just not seed it with grass and maybe make it a little green area or something like that, rather than...
Well, I thought we'd agree.
Yes, sir. The amendment for the demolition of the AMP building up to, was, is up to forty thousand dollars. I believe it cost between thirty-four and thirty-five thousand dollars to demolish, but we needed several thousand dollars to... We were, what staff was going to do was put shop ABC or very expensive gravel. But if it's the council's request, we can put sod there as well. However...
I'm just thinking it'd be a whole lot cheaper if we just seeded it and had, you know, had a grassy area, maybe put some trees or something like that out there.
I guess my only worry is also is when it rains, it's probably going to wash.
Gravel? Gravel?
Yeah. Not really the whole of it.
The shop ABC, what they're talking about using is a fine thing, and it will pack. You can take the fire truck out there, spray it down a couple times, run the motor grader, and it'll be about as hard as concrete. Because I've got some in my yard. The, the, well, the other, it's a clay base out there at this point, so you're going to have a hard time growing some of our normal grass.
Put sod down.
On a, on a clay. I mean, it's all, it's the foundation for the building, so...
Counsel, I did meet earlier today with our public works director, and he did a little, some, a little bit of additional grading out there to get the grade as close or slightly below the pavement level. But he felt like shop ABC would settle and would work fine. But whatever you guys prefer is fine with us.
And I mean, I'm not questioning Billy at all. I'm just, I'm just saying, is there any way we can get out of it any cheaper? We've already sunk a bunch of money out there.
We did a rough estimate, and I believe we come up with about six, seven truckloads, maybe.
Which would cost probably around three to four thousand dollars.
What about sod?
How much would it cost for six or seven loads of topsoil?
We, we didn't, we didn't get a rough estimate, but I would say probably between one to two thousand dollars for sod.
Really? I don't know. I mean...
Depending on if you wanted to seed it or if you wanted to blow sod out.
Yeah.
Could you seed it?
You better put water...
You better put topsoil down.
Better put water on.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I just know I've got a, a building that's got, at a building I own in Scotland County, and we've got parking issues like that. The grass comes through, and it just, it doesn't look good. I mean, how you going to deal with the grass? If anything, will it start coming up?
Well, we, we spray out there now, and we get weeds coming up.
What would be your recommendation? Cheapest way out? Because I mean, that's what I think I'm looking for.
Without, without checking further into it, I couldn't tell you how much it would cost to actually sod it. But the problem with sod is that we're going to have to put some kind of water to actually keep it wet.
You got to work regular, a sod or a cord to get it.
That's only to figure out how to have a lot to put sod in.
Well, that's such a big...
Yeah. We don't want to put in air irrigation system.
In favor of beautifying it, one little spot, when the rest of it is in terrible condition, while we just put the rock and crush and run, or whatever you're talking about in there, until we decide what we're going to do with the property. I don't see any point in trying to beautify it with a nice, pretty grass spot.
Because I wasn't talking about like, nothing like that. I was just talking about anything other than four, you know, four thousand dollars for first...
Well, I'd say put rock in there. That'd be my...
But I mean, if you don't have any other estimates, I mean, you have the water issues and all, so...
And we surely don't want to put irrigation over there for a little spot like that.
No. Nothing but a little spot in the parking lot.
As you were.
I'm just asking.
That's fine, yeah.
Seems like a lot of money for that.
Any other ques, any other questions on any of...
That was just it.
All right. Well, other than that, I'm, so I move to approve.
All right. Got a motion to approve the budget amendment. I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Are there any further questions or additions or deletions to this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay. Item number eleven, which is enclosure number five, is a mayoral appointment to the Hamlet Board of, Board of Commissioners, Hamlet Housing Board of Commissioners. And the request from the Hamlet Authority is requested that Ms. Tammy Culler term as Commissioner on Hamlet Housing Authority of Board of Commissioners expires on September 2016. And she has expressed an desire to be reappointed to the board to serve another five-year term. And the executive director has requested that she be reappointed, and therefore, I will appoint her again at this time. Item number twelve is enclosure number six. We have an opening on the Senior Center Advisory Board. And the application that we have for that is from Mr. Leroy Crowder. Mr. Crowder has been on that board before and has been off of it for some time, and did an excellent job while he was on it. And I would recommend that he be reappointed. That's up to him.
I move to reappoint Mr. Crowder.
I have a motion to appoint.
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. Next item of business is item number thirteen, which is City of Hamlet Emergency Operations Counsel was asked to review and adopt the plan as the official emergency operations guide for the city of Hamlet. I guess my only question on this is, has everybody had an opportunity to even look at it and see whether or not we need to... There's a lot of material there this first time I've seen.
I did ask, I'm sorry, you want to go ahead?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say briefly that what the plan is, is a plan that outlines emergency operation procedures in the event that a major emergency were to occur. The plan keeps multiple departments, elected officials, administrative staff, and even members of other agencies on the same page as a major event unfolds, which is crucial. It works along with Rockingham's and the county's plan, which is crucial because the various agencies would need to be working in unison in the event a major storm or terrorist attack or other incident were to occur.
Calvin said that this is, everything is up to par, what it needs to be.
Okay.
Talking about it.
All right.
With that, anybody has a question on it? I move to approve.
I got a motion to approve the emergency operation plan. I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. Next item of business to come up is an update of the employee classification system. And I will let the city manager at this time make comments on this, and let you all have any questions you've got, once you...
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and city council, as you're aware, we recently restructured the city's departments, and we consolidated several public works departments into public works, and put Public Works Director Billy Stubbs over those. This will hopefully further strengthen the chain of command and streamline operations. And in exchange for taking on those additional duties, I'm recommending that the public works director's salary be moved from salary grade seventeen to salary grade eighteen, which would be a five percent raise. I know that it's important for your directors and department heads to be paid accordingly. So, in addition to that, the fire chief's position is also being moved from grade sixteen to seventeen, which is also a five percent raise.
Counsel, do you have questions on this?
I just would throw this in, that I think this is probably one of the best things we've done in a long time.
I agree.
It's something that hadn't been done in fifteen, twenty years.
At least.
It trimmed down, what, six, seven department heads and streamlined our, our hierarchy down, down there with the public works. And I think we'll see some noticeable changes with that. Very pleased with that. Thanks for the fine job that you're doing. Everybody down there...
Thank you for taking it on.
With that, I should move to approve.
Okay. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise.
Marcus, thank you again for doing it, your staff, doing that, figuring that out and getting that fixed.
Item number fifteen is appointments to the Hamlet Museum Board. I hope we all have our opportunity to look at them, and it's, uh, for Mr. Michael Dixon and for Ms. Stephanie Dixon. And, uh, these were recommended by our director at the museum, Michael Rex. Alright. Whatever your wishes are, council, on these two, they live in Hamlet?
Based on the.
Yeah.
Director's recommendation, I so move that they be appointed to their board.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, uh, I have got a mayoral proclamation for the American Legion Day in Hamlet, and we have with us tonight Mr. Richard Lunsford, who is a member of the Hamlet American Legion, and if you'd like to just come up to the, uh, thing there, I'd like to read this and present it to you. Whereas, whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress in nineteen nineteen on September the sixteenth as a wartime veterans organization, based on the four pillars of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas over the years, the American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization, which now numbers more than two-point-five million members, men and women, and over fourteen thousand American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that support the four pillars and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, the youth of America, and its citizens. And whereas the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy, while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas, the twenty sixteen observance of American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize legionnaires in our community for their many contributions. Now therefore, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of the City of Hamlet, North Carolina, do proclaim September the sixteenth of twenty sixteen as American Legion Day. And witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand as thirteenth day of September, year of Lord two thousand and sixteen.
No, sir, I do want to say thank you and God bless America.
At this time, we will, uh, move into the, uh, comments. I do see that we have got some of our supervisors here tonight, and I would just ask if any of them have any comments. Billy, did you have any comments for us tonight? Okay. Uh, tax. Uh, tax, uh, have y'all got a date yet when the tax statement's coming out, or do you have? I've had several people ask.
We're hoping tomorrow.
Oh, my goodness, that's great.
We're hoping tomorrow, that's the plan of this year, we're supposed to be a party on the plan.
Very good, you're doing a great job over there. Got all new programs.
I don't think anybody's in a hurry, really.
Good tax bills.
I've had a lot of calls.
Uh, yeah. Stephanie, did you have anything for us tonight? Okay, very good. Um, Jill, you have anything? Pam? Alright, uh, city manager, for.
Yes, sir, uh, Mayor, I know that you're gonna talk about the fair, so I will pass that along to you, um, but I do want to encourage folks to come out and enjoy the fair from October eleventh through the fifteenth. But, um, I had one other announcement that I wanted to make, and that was about an event that, um, is going to occur this Saturday from ten AM to two. A few groups of musicians have asked the city for the ability to play jazz music in Main Street Park. This is this Saturday, September seventeenth, in honor of John Coltrane, as this Saturday is his birthday. So I invite folks in the community to come out and listen to some jazz music.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Um, do we know how busy that event's gonna be? I mean, is something the city needs to do to kind of pick out for traffic and people crossing the street and all down there?
I do not know how busy of an event this would be, but, um, this would be the first of its kind, to my knowledge. Um, I think that it will be a smaller event, but the organizer contacted the city, um, at a time that it was too late to schedule to close Main Street, because it does take a period of time to develop an ordinance to close the street, and then you DOT requests that we give them ample opportunity ahead of time, once an ordinance is passed, to let them know that the city intends to close, um, Main Street, which is state right-of-way. So, um, they didn't request that we close the street, um, it's, I don't believe that it would be considered a city event, they just asked for a place to come play.
Yeah, that's fun.
Um, I believe that they're trying to work out a few food vendors, um, but, um, we are not sure exactly who they intend to bring, I'm working directly with them, um, and making sure that they have the appropriate, um, permits through the county that they would need if they intend to do so, but, um, did that answer your question?
Yeah. I saw one of the advertisements online, and it just said they were having hot dogs, chips, and drinks, appeared like that whoever's putting on is gonna cook, they're gonna have anybody to do that.
Well, I got.
They even had a price, real cheap, too.
I saw the flyer, I believe it said lunch, and Coltrane lunch, or something like that, three dollars for two hot dogs, chips, and a drink.
I don't think they're gonna give vendors to go down there for three dollars.
No, they've been doing this for several years, and they don't really make a big.
Is this the same group that's wanting to eventually have a?
I assume it is.
A big event?
There's two different ones going, getting ready to go on. There's Gerald, uh, can't think of his last name, uh, Jerome.
Yeah, Jerome, I thought that's who was doing this.
No, Jerome's doing one October the first, I believe it is, down near Guy, and this is a gentleman from, that works for, uh, Scotland Hostess.
Oh, okay.
And he's been trying to do one. The, the food becomes an issue with the county's requirements.
Yeah.
They get an inspection, and they're, they've done this as a, um, it's not planned, it's a little, I don't think.
I got an email from Mr. Cranford, um, after, sometime this afternoon, between four and six, and he said the Richmond Senior High School Marching Band Color Guard will be selling food. Hot dog plates will be three dollars. Highway fifty-five is cooking the hot dogs. KFC is providing the coleslaw, and Coke donated beverages. Because it is a music-themed event, the money collected from the food will go to the Richmond Senior High School Marching Band. The band members will perform first. There will be a short welcome after the, after that, with Belinda Rice of First Presbyterian Church in Hamlet, giving a brief invocation and a blessing of the food. A new create, a new creation band from Bennettsville will be performing from that point until two PM. The School of Discovery Singers may perform, but because it's so early in the school year, their director felt that they may not be ready at this time. So, yes, sir.
And, and along that lines, we need a, we need a policy that they can not actually maybe rent the park, but they ought to be able to reserve the park, so that if somebody came up there with their boombox, we would have a way to say, I'm sorry, but they have reserved this park, and you need.
I think that would be a good.
That's right, if, if the, if the city did want to allow people the, uh, ability to reserve the park in advance for a birthday party or some kind of event, we would need a policy developed.
We need to get a policy.
Especially not W D Z for it, they have parties out there a lot.
Yeah. To my knowledge, we have always left them first come, first served, open to the public during operating hours and.
But it's not really the first come, first served, if the guy wanted to come up there and, and he didn't like somebody that was putting on a bin or something, for lack of a better term, he could go turn his boombox on and, and cause an issue.
That's right, I, I don't know what we would do if a birthday party was going on during a jazz festival, or several different things, um.
And I'm sure other places have a policy, he's shaking his head, which we could get back with this, I mean, again, not trying to charge, just trying to make it so that if.
Reserve it.
If you were gonna have your kids' birthday party there, you, and you've thought ahead.
We could run into the same thing with our Christmas thing down there, somebody could go in there before we got there, and just mess that whole thing up, couldn't they?
Yeah, I mean, in all honesty, yeah.
Figure out something for us, Marcus.
Have a family reunion down there or something, you know?
I sure will. And I'll work with TC on it, too.
Let Mr. Morris in.
Okay.
And Marcus, did the, the food being provided by other people, did that meet the county's?
I don't know yet, I, I've, I'm just reading through this email, uh, it looks like a lot of the food is being prepared by businesses.
We wouldn't be responsible for that.
But we're hosting, well, you get into that legal thing, it's on our property, if somebody's not following the, the, the help things, and they're selling food, if they're giving it away, it's one thing, if they're selling it, it's a whole different thing, and I, he might, I don't know what he's gonna shake or go which way, but, but we could be liable, because we've allowed somebody to sell food.
I'm done in a public.
I, I was gonna say, I, I think any liability Seaboard have would be more in the sense that we have liability when somebody uses public parks or facilities, so if somebody got hurt, you know, there's always that issue. As far as the selling of food, I'm less concerned about that, because it's, it's not a city-sponsored event, it is the, it's the Booster Club that's doing the, um, the fundraising, and, you know, they're holding out the food, so I don't have as much concern about that. I'm, I'm not concerned about using the facility either, it's just kind of liability that comes with, allowing groups to use public spaces.
Yeah, I think the band's looking to try to find some different funding in, in this year, and I know they've been limiting travel and some of the games and stuff, and they're trying to.
Which falls under, yeah, which falls under the same thing, like down at the Lions, when we do the fair, we have contracts, people that want to sell food have to sign, and they're required to get with the, and there's no fault off us if they fail to do so, they can kind of close them down.
Now, if this became a more frequent thing, I'd suggest, you know, having something like, groups have to get a, you know, insurance policy, something like that, but it, it sounds like this happens maybe once a year, um, so I don't know that going all the way to having formal contracts or insurance policies.
It's not, you know.
That might be overkill for the amount of times.
But we're also, we've learned a lot with, with doing the Seaboard Festival, I'm not trying to, but the nonprofits now for the Seaboard Festival have to have, they have to pay seventy-five dollars to the, uh, Health Department for an inspection for a nonprofit. This is a new law.
Okay.
They didn't, they didn't have to do this last year, but this, this year, it's, it's different.
Well, that, that's new to me as well, we'll look into that, and if they need an inspection of some sort, then we'll make sure that that gets done.
I would just call the Health Department tomorrow and ask them what, 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 what the rule is, tell them what you're trying to do.
They were trying at one time to put that information online, did they ever do it to the Health Department? They never did it.
I'll be working with staff and TC to work on a policy, and I plan to have it to you at next month's meeting.
What else have you got?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
At this time, then, we'll move along to, uh, comment council, Mr. Martin?
No, I don't have anything, sir.
I sure will.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. McLean? Uh, the Health Department forums are on seaboardfestival.com if you need, if you need for them, uh, we've been updated by them recently, but there has been a change in the policy, so you need to contact them. Uh, I want to thank, or pass on, G104's been a big supporter in Hamlet, they, they broadcast our parade last year, or announced our parade, and we broadcast it on YouTube, and it was their twenty-fifth anniversary in, in the community on, on August the twenty-fifth. Just kind of a, a heads up for G104. And, um, again, the Seaboard Festival's, uh, the last Saturday in October, we hope everybody will come out, you'll see a lot of different, uh, food vendors this year, uh, and a lot more crafters, I believe she's up to about forty different crafters, and, uh, or forty more crafters than, than in the past, and, uh, you might not see as many politicians, so that, that, that might make everybody happy.
Yeah.
So, uh, last, it's October. Mr. McLean?
Just one thing, Marcus, if you were, the old lounge mat up on one seventy-seven, um, I think it had a fire up there several years ago, and I don't know how much of the structure's there, I noticed the shills there, but in the parking lot, they've got some rather large rocks right beside the street on one seventy-seven and.
They're blocking the entrance, the driveway.
Yeah, block, I, I, I understand what he's trying to do, but I'm, I'm.
It'll be a funeral home.
Do what?
It's gonna be a funeral home.
Okay, yeah, I mean, uh, nothing wrong with blocking the entrance, but I'm just questioning the method, not, not the, the process, but, um, on the, the side, what is that, Oakhurst or, um, whatever the street that runs the opposite direction, the rocks are like, literally in the street sidewalk, and maybe just have somebody check that out.
That might be in State Highway right of way.
Yeah, well, I know the ones on one seventy-seven on the right of way, because they're like right on the side of the road, if you.
If they're impeding traffic, I can ask them to, to move, uh, the, the rocks.
And I didn't just bring that up, somebody brought that to my attention, so.
I wonder if it turned into a hangout or something.
Well, it would, but I mean, you could back them up, or put some, put something up there, you know, other than just rocks, six inches off the road, I mean, it's, doesn't look good, and I don't think it's the safest thing in the world either. Um. It's not marked. Do what? It's not marked or anything?
No.
No, no. Yeah, so, but that was it. That's all I have.
Anything else? Your turn? Anything else?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were talking to him.
No, I'm ready for Jonathan.
Um, yeah, so the only thing I really have is, uh, you know, Seaboard Festival coming up, excited about that, I know it's kind of been well talked about, so excited to see how that turns out. And the only other thing I have is, um, and I'm really not looking for any in-depth conversation about it, but, um, residents leaving limbs and leaves out on the street, where we've talked about it before, it needs to be left on their property. I mean, it's really becoming an issue because of drains getting clogged and all, and I'm seeing it a lot more, um, going through my neighborhood the other day, it was like, you know, bam, 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 just constantly. Um, it, can we put this back on the water bill, um, stating that?
You could cut it stop, I had some of these stumps here for that. Do.
We're working on that.
Yeah.
We are working.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and they do that, but these are like, um.
Fine straw and that sort of thing.
Fine straw and leaves.
Yard and breeze.
Small, I mean, and, you know, some of the piles I've been seeing are small, but at the same time, you know, you put it on the curb, and as soon as it rains, it washes down to the drain, and then the drains get backed up, and I don't think what people understand is, it's not that we just don't want it, aside from the fact that it looks horrible, and then you nearly hit it with your vehicle. The other part of that is, is when your yard is swamped in water, it's because you left stuff out in the street and it's clogged drain up, so, you know, you're really helping yourself by leaving it in your yard, it's not gonna kill your grass, because it's normally picked up in a, you know, we do that once, once a week, so, I mean, it's not gonna stay there for long.
Sometimes you get around more than that.
Yeah, so, you know, if we just, if we can get it on the water bill, bold print, capital letters.
We get that letter.
You know? Yeah, that's, but that's, that's all I have, is, is I've been seeing that a lot, lot. Oh, and to go along with that, we don't, if, if you pay a contractor to cut limbs down, City of Hamlet does not pick it up. People need to understand that.
Uh, per our policy, we don't pick up, um, large stumps and any limbs longer than six feet long.
Yeah, because we rode out and saw some areas where.
Fifty pounds.
And we may get, we may eventually get to a point where we have to start putting signs on not picking it up, you know? I know we're having a problem up here on that, with the street right now, trying to get, have they done anything this week at all?
So bold print, capital letters if we can. Sixteen pounds.
We'll put as much as we can on.
Yeah, there you go.
We're limited in the text that we can put on there, we'll.
That's it.
We'll try our best.
Yeah, and on the, and on Facebook page, yeah, good, yeah, good idea there.
Uh, better, better than interest.
And in the newspaper?
That's our, it's temporary. The, um, comments I have tonight are very short, uh, again, same thing, reminding that we're having the fair on October eleventh through fifteenth. Last year, they wouldn't let us have any live birds, this year we'll have live birds again, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, we will be looking forward to any kind of crafts, or vegetables, or plants, or anything that you've got, that you might be able to put in the fair down there and get it judged. If you win, you're gonna win some money for it, so it'd be worth your time just to bring it down there. We'd like to have a lot more things to display, and, uh, so we'd like to see that. The, uh, Business of the Month this month is Main Street Central down here, on Main Street, we'd ask everybody to go by and, uh, see Nancy and, uh, the folks down there, sit around and talk to them, they like to talk to you, and they like to talk about things going on, and if you want to know what's going on in Hamlet, that's a good place to go find out. But, uh, we're glad that they are the, uh, Business of the Month. And to go along with what Johnson said about the, uh, debris out on the street, there's a lot of folks that do not get their trash cans in after the trash comes, and it doesn't look good, so please get your trash cans and take them around behind your house or wherever you put them, and make the city look a little bit better. I appreciate the work that the city, uh, the city is doing, I appreciate the things that we've called on recently, and they have been repaired. Uh, one of the major issues was, uh, taken care of, was the sidewalk down there near the middle school on McDonnell, it had been ripped up, and they have put fresh cement in there, and it looks good. Uh, the area down in the curve, below it where the pond is, is growing, getting overgrown with the tudzu, they've gone in and cut all that out, and we got a real nice letter from the resident down there complimenting the city on it, so thank you so much for what you're doing, appreciate it. If there's no further business, at this time, I would ask to go for a motion to go into closed session for General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, three, five, and six, for the attorney-client privilege, discussion of acquisition of real property and personnel matters.
So moved to go into closed session, Barry.
Okay, I have a motion.
Sure.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. At this time, we are back into open session. There were no votes or decisions or anything that were made in the, in the closed session. At this time, I would ask for a motion to close the meeting.
So move.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. We're standing closed, just adjourned at this time.